Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the City of Gulf Shores Council Work Session, February the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I'm calling meeting to order, and the first item on the agenda is councilman discussion period, Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing today.
Thank you. Before we get into our post-scheduled agenda, I'm going to ask Brandon to come to the microphone. We're obviously expecting some pretty severe weather this evening on wet roads to let everyone kind of know what we're doing in the potential that we have that black ice or some icy surface show up. Brandon, talk to us.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor. We are monitoring the weather conditions and are staying up to date. National Weather Service constantly sending out some weather briefings to us. So at this time, it's expected that the weather conditions to the north and west of us will be a lot more harsh than what we'll receive down here. But just in case, I always want to be prepared. We do have city crews standing by tonight that will be monitoring the situation, and we have sand and salt both stored and ready to go so that if we need it, we can do everything that we can to keep the bridges open tonight and any roadways. But we do want to caution everyone, because of the rain that we had earlier today and with the freezing temperatures, they are expecting the wind chill factor to get down into the low teens tonight in this area. So it can cause some icy road conditions and want everyone to remain safe and off the roads if possible. And again, we'll have crews out at four AM in the morning to go and assess the situation. So really want people to stay tuned to the news and any of our social media sites for any updates that we have going out.
Thank you, Brandon.
Yes, sir.
Because those bridges can be quite dangerous when they get iced over, and it's hard to see, so taking that precaution, just so you'll know. The first item on the posted agenda is the ABC license application from Al's Liquor. Wanda?
Yes, sir. Pinkest Beverages Incorporated, doing business as Al's Liquor, has applied for a lounge retail liquor class-two package license. The business will be located at one sixty Cotton Creek Drive, Suite two fifteen, in the Public Shopping Center. The application has been through the departmental review, and a public hearing has been advertised for Monday, February twenty-second during the regularly scheduled city council meeting. So following a successful public hearing, the application will be ready for council consideration.
Thank you, Wanda. Council, any questions for Wanda? Anybody in the audience with any questions or comments on this ABC license application? Thank you, Wanda. Next item, we have Deputy Chief Niedemeyer, Dan is going to talk to us about amending the code of ordinance for the operation of motor-driven cycles.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Have before you today a public safety matter relating to rented motor-driven scooters on the streets of the city. It's based on complaints from residents, guests, and also motorists within the city. The police department has been dealing with an ongoing problem for quite a while regarding rented motor-driven scooters. In two thousand and twenty alone, we had thirteen rental vehicle stops on rented scooters by us and the police department. We had an additional twelve traffic complaints involving rented scooters. These are only rented scooters because this is how we tracked it, and a lot of those began once the beach reopened. Those complaints included equipment violations, driving on sidewalks and bike paths, reckless driving, and also traffic violations. But the one of note was we handled eighteen accidents last year involving rented scooters. Of those eighteen accidents, eighteen involved injuries and two involved airlifting the operator of the rented scooter to the hospital. We recommend the amendment of the previous ordinance to include restrictions relating to rented driven motor scooters, rented motor-driven scooters. Similar ordinance has been passed in Panama City, Florida, and Key West, Florida is also dealing with a similar issue. The amendment would prohibit the commercial rental of motor-driven vehicles on January first of next year, and will require additional provisions on the part of both the business and the customer who rents a scooter. So in the interim between now and then, any rented rental scooter company would be required, according to the amendment, to only rent to people with a valid motorcycle endorsement or license. For example, Alabama requires anyone driving any motor-driven scooter or motorcycle to have a motorcycle endorsement. A lot of other states do not require that. Anything under fifty cc's doesn't require a motorcycle endorsement. Alabama does require that endorsement even for below fifty cc's. So moving forward in the interim, any rental company who rents these scooters would be required to only rent to people with a motorcycle endorsement either in the state of Alabama or another state. They would also have to maintain a log that would log the rented scooter, the operator, and then provide a photo of the driver's license of the person renting the motor-driven scooter. And they would also have to provide safety equipment for the renters who rent the scooters and maintain liability insurance. A violation of those requirements could be grounds for the revocation of the business license if they violate the ordinance in the interim. As far as the renter goes, they would have to have that motorcycle license, and then they would also have to sign an agreement stating they will not commit any traffic violations while they're operating that, and that they would also agree to wear the safety equipment provided by the business. And violations for that would include a fine or some jail term as imposed by the municipal court.
Dan, thank you. Council, any questions or comments?
I have a couple. Deputy Chief, is there any information regarding the number of rentals that took place and how much of these accidents or complaints, sorry, percentage of that?
We don't have that. What we did do is we don't know, we were only able to run by the company that was entered into our database. So if a scooter was involved in an accident, we only would have a record of that because it was owned by the rental company. So it's very hard to even track citations because the citation goes to the owner. We weren't able to track or provide the number of citations. Obviously, speeding is a big problem with those scooters, but a lot of it's reckless driving and driving on the sidewalk.
Secondly, it feels harsh to me to not allow that type of business at all in the city. Is it anticipated that this activity that takes place between now and January may reduce the activity enough for us to reconsider not disallowing that type of business in the future?
I would say it's quite possible. I think if simply by requiring the motorcycle endorsement, we could be reducing the problem just on that. I believe, and I think all of us believe over at the police department, that there are so many people that come and rent them, and they think it's a glorified bicycle. They're actually a very dangerous missile that they have, and when I reviewed the accident reports, a lot of them were the operator was trying to brake and accelerate it on accident and ran into a parked car or what have you. So I think just the knowledge of having a motorcycle license could impact our calls for service in a positive way for us and that they would go down.
All right, sir. I'm not trying to discount the work that you have done in the analysis or anything by that nature. I certainly put faith in everything that you investigate and are putting forward to us, but again, I hate to disallow a business to operate unless steps are being taken in the interim. Looks like this may be a way to determine whether that will be effective, and hopefully we can revisit that by the time.
Yeah, I would say this is a good way to look at it. This is something that's going to happen in the interim. There are some restrictions placed on the owner. And I will say this, we have one rental company here in town. I've talked to the owner probably four or five times. He himself has been vigilant in some of the reckless driving that has occurred, that if they don't always call the police department, sometimes they call him, and he would also go and try to deter that a little bit. I think we may have some reduction in calls for service. You know, like you said, it'd be a good chance to maybe review it.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the council with any questions? Audience, anybody? Anybody here from the company that likes to make some comments? Thank you. Step the microphone, please, and introduce yourself. Are you with the company?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
That's my man, I'm a local resident here, seasonal out of Oyster Bay. I just wondered if you already have ordinance prohibiting or regulating the, what he's talking about are mopeds, but the motorized scooters, you know, the ones you stand on, you go into a large city, Nashville, any of the larger cities, they've had major problems with those. You've got a walking district that you're in the process of developing. I just wonder if there's anything on the books regarding those. I hadn't seen anything around here yet, so.
Well, we've been asked twice, I think it is, since I've been here eight years, to franchise a company to rent those, and we've refused that. And so right now, there's no rental company that allows that. And a personal, somebody that owns one personally, right now, there's no prohibition on that from a personal standpoint, but no, there's no company that's allowed to rent those.
The rental ones really are the issue. They're all GPS tracked, and so they put a credit card on them. They just drop it where they're at. And my son lives in Nashville, and they're just all over the place. And somebody was killed on one here last year. But they're terrible, down the sidewalks. So, okay, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Yes?
Hi, my name is Jamie Bowman. Myself and Terry own Coyote Beach Sports. We have a little bit of conflicting data because we picked up all the reports from the police department earlier today, and we only have eleven reports. And the issue that we're having a difficulty mitigating is that these folks come from states that don't require motorcycle endorsement to operate a forty-nine cc scooter. But moving forward, we want to cooperate and do whatever we're required to do, but as far as renting to folks who, you know, have a license from that state, how do we want to mitigate that moving forward? And they only provided us with eleven. Of those eleven, they're from states that don't require the motorcycle endorsement.
Well, you're in Alabama now, and Alabama law requires that you only, doesn't mean matter, I don't know, my assumption is it doesn't matter where you came from, you're here, you follow our laws. Even if they didn't have speeding laws somewhere else, you get here, you've got to follow our laws on our highways. So that would be my assumption, unless there's some legal precedent that I'm not aware of.
Yes, sir, there is. And also, just make note, we need to enter that we're being represented by Marcus McDowell.
Okay, well, we recognize that, and that will probably change the way we go forward because if you have legal representation, then we have to communicate through our legal representation.
Yes, sir.
It kind of keeps us out of the discussion going forward.
Yes, sir.
But that's good to know. Thank you for telling us that, and we will continue to monitor through our council as they work together. And we are hopeful, as Steve Jones mentioned, as Chief Niedemeyer said, we're hopeful that we can put in place the kind of restrictions that don't force us to make it go away, but we can't allow, in my opinion, we shouldn't allow operation of dangerous vehicles, particularly to younger operators, and I think that is my bigger concern related to the license. As you get, then you're a requirement to train them and get them operating, and then they get out. I've had kids, I know kids, and so that's a concern of mine. But again, we'll continue to communicate in the proper way.
And we're receptive to doing that, increasing the age to twenty-one or whatever we identify as being the safest thing moving forward. But yeah, that's all we wanted to say.
We'll try to encourage your representative to communicate quickly. This is on the docket to be voted on next week, and so we need to have whatever modifications we can agree on, they can agree on through this process so we can keep it on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is from the Engineering Department. Mark Ackerman has four different proposals to discuss.
Yes, sir. The first two are related. Recall in the past, we've had two groups of individuals in the community surrounding West Fourth Street, which is down on the beach, and we've had two groups come to us with signed petitions asking us to reconsider different options on the West Fourth Street Bridge. One of those options was to reopen it to vehicular traffic, and the other option was to reopen it only to pedestrian traffic. So what I have tonight for discussion is a proposal from Skipper Consulting to evaluate the feasibility of that bridge reopening as both a transportation bridge and as well as a pedestrian bridge. So we'll have a proposal from them to consider it. And Fourth Street, West Fourth Street, connects Windmill Ridge Road to Beach Boulevard, and it's bisected by several roads along the way. And so this is the only other connection back to Windmill Ridge Road from Beach Boulevard. And if you can see on the bottom right-hand corner of this vicinity map, there's two undeveloped pieces of property. That includes the two-acre site where in the past, we've had a proposal for the Embassy Suite and proposed roughly the same size site next to it, which could develop as well. Those two sites will be considered, and those traffic impacts considered if those develop out for high-density use, as well as the traffic generated by the surrounding neighborhoods and businesses. So Skipper will look at all that. We will have a public involvement meeting so we can get input from both sides of the canal there, the folks that want it to be reopened for a traffic bridge, and then the folks that want it to be open solely for a pedestrian bridge. So with all that being considered, some background on the project, this bridge has been closed to traffic for over ten years because of an unsafe condition with the structure of the bridge. It's a very old bridge, was put in probably fifty, sixty years ago when that actually was in the county. So we will be evaluating that. It's going to have to be replaced in some shape, fashion, or form. And we're looking at all aspects of that. And once we have the public involvement meeting and get the public's input, we get Skipper's input, we'll be coming back to the council and making a presentation for a recommendation as to how we need to proceed in the near future. We do have ten thousand dollars budgeted for this traffic study, and Skipper's proposal is for an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars, and therefore, we do recommend awarding this proposal to Skipper Consulting, and then we'll move forward from there.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions or comments, council? Anybody in the audience here to speak on this or have an opinion or a thought? Okay, Mark, you got another?
Yes, the second item is piggybacking the first one. So not only we're going to have a traffic study performed on the Fourth Street Bridge, but we're also going to engage J. Consulting with the council approval to evaluate the bridge for a design standpoint as well as a construction cost estimates. So whatever recommendation Skipper comes back, we're going to take those recommendations, work with J. Consulting, and they will do some conceptual renderings of what the bridge could look like, and then if it's a pedestrian bridge, if it's a traffic bridge, what those cost elements are going to be, as well as the conceptual design. And in addition to the proposal from them to consider the Fourth Street Bridge, we're also going to be looking at the Windmill Ridge Road Bridge for pedestrian improvements that will facilitate future pedestrian improvements along Windmill Ridge Road. Right now, we have only a bike lane on one side of the road, and we hope in the future as we look at that road for improvements that we'll do a complete street, look at bike lanes or multimodal operations on both sides of that road, and therefore, we'll need to consider some pedestrian improvements to that bridge as well. So not only we're going to look at the Fourth Street Bridge, we'll look at the opportunity for future improvements to the Windmill Ridge Road Bridge as well for pedestrian elements. Go ahead, we've kind of covered all this. We do have fifteen thousand dollars budgeted in this year's budget for this proposal, and J. Consulting's proposal is in an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, and therefore, we're recommending approval of their proposal so we can get started on this project.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make sure, because the way he said it, it's not an either-or pedestrian versus vehicle. We're also looking at a combinating vote, so where vehicles can use it as well as increased safety for pedestrians as well. Just wanted to make sure you knew.
Thank you, Steve. And another note, we will be voting next Monday to award the design contract for understanding the traffic flow with Skipper and designing the bridge. We're not voting on whether to make it a traffic, a vehicular, or pedestrian. That's not what we're voting on. We're just awarding the contract to the folks to help us figure out and have a public presentation of what their results are. Just want to make that clear so there's no concern that we're making a decision on the bridge tonight. Council, anybody else?
One question. I assume with Jade and with Skipper doing the study, when a fourth intersects with Windmill on the west side of the bridge, that's a blind spot.
Yes.
To travel that. And will this study kind of look at solutions to that as well? It's not just pedestrian safety, but there's also vehicular safety if we engage that bridge and that becomes, you know, a traffic spot. So I assume that Jade and Skipper will incorporate that into their design and their recommendations?
Yes, that is correct, because if it does reopen for traffic, the traffic loading at that intersection will increase, and therefore, we'll have to consider that as part of the overall study. And then also, if there is a pedestrian element that could be included on the south side of that bridge, we'd have to make sure that it doesn't further degrade the site distances we have at that intersection.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else on the council? Audience, anybody with anything? Okay, Mark, go ahead.
The next one we have is a bid for y'all's consideration, and this bid is to replace the lighting that was damaged or completely destroyed in Gulf Place as a result of Hurricane Sally. When Hurricane Sally hit, we had substantial damage to Gulf Place, but more important, we lost numerous lights, the LED turtle lights that we have in and around all three phases of Gulf Place. We selected bids and put those out for the public, and Bill Smith Electric was the lowest conforming bidder. Recall, in Gulf Place, we have essentially three phases that when we constructed Gulf Place, we had the first phase, which is at West Second Street, and then we have the green lawn area and the main bathroom in and around the hangout and surf stall, and then we have Phase Three, which is where our police precinct is at, as well as the additional locals-only parking lot. All three phases are included in this bid, so all the lighting that was damaged in all three phases are included in this bid. So this is just an example of some of the damage we saw after Sally. If you look, we have, on the first picture, you have parts of a dual light that are missing. You've got one that's completely destroyed, and then in the third one, that's just where we went around and collected the damaged lights out of the parking lots to make it open and safe for people to come in and park. So we have a lot of damage. In fact, within the parking lots, we had thirty-seven lights that were damaged. When we opened bids, these damages totaled two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. Therefore, because there are unit costs associated with this, we're recommending a not-to-exceed amount of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And these are custom fabricated lights that are turtle-friendly and have been approved by Fish and Wildlife, and that was a condition of when we built Gulf Place, Phase One, Two, and Three, that the lighting in there had to conform to Fish and Wildlife standards for turtle lighting. And that's why these lights are definitely more expensive than what you would typically see in a parking lot. Good news is, these fixtures are covered under our umbrella insurance policy that we have. So therefore, the expenses associated with replacing these due to Hurricane Sally are covered in our insurance. Therefore, we're recommending we award this bid to Bill Smith Electric in an amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mark. Council, any questions, comments?
Yes, sir. Now, Mark, is there any opportunity that when these lights are reinstalled, there would be a way to upgrade them or harden them somewhat that might mitigate future damage?
We can definitely look at that and see if there's some recommendations that electrical company can make.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Audience, any questions, comments? Okay, Mark, you got one more?
Last one, this is to renew the commercial garbage franchise. We have three waste and garbage franchises that we consider every five years. The first one is a residential franchise. The second one is commercial demolition and construction debris, and this is the third and final one, and that is for commercial garbage. So these are the haulers that service businesses in our city or condominiums and other commercial properties, but are licensed to actually haul garbage and protrusible waste. There we go. So there's only three currently licensed, and that are Republic Services, Waste Management, and Waste Pro of Alabama. Therefore, we're asking to have their commercial franchises renewed. This renewal will go through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, which also coincides with the previous two garbage franchises that I mentioned in my presentation. And each, as with every franchise, each franchise holder remits a four hundred and fifty-dollar And each, as with every franchise, each franchise holder remits a $450 annual payment to maintain that franchise, and also must show proof of insurance to the city, and it must remain current. Therefore, staff's recommending that we renew these franchises through the year, 2025, December 31st.
Thank you, Mark. Council, any questions? Audience, questions, comments? Thank you, Mark.
What kind of trash did you say that was?
Protrusible, that means it rots.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Can you spell that and use that in a sentence?
I used it in a sentence, but don't ask me to spell it. That's why I'm an engineer.
Thank you, Mark. Jason, glad you got enlightened. I didn't know either, I'm glad you asked. Melvin, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The first item I have is the surplus and donation of a 2006 yard fire truck. This truck has approximately 100,000 miles. It was put in service in 2006, taken out when we got the new Rosenbowers. So it's reached its end of life with us, and we're asking to donate this engine to the City of Dolphin Island Fire Department. They're an all-volunteer department with a single engine, and we feel that this would help them serve their community. Their mutual aid is quite lengthy to get to them, so we hope that this truck would be able to help them serve their people. So we recommend the surplus and donation of this engine to the town of Dolphin Island.
Melvin, thanks. Council, any questions? Audience, anybody? Next.
The second item, Mayor, is donating surplus, 17 serviceable air packs to the City of Orange Beach Fire Department for their training facility. These air packs were replaced when the council approved the purchase of the 65 MSA air packs that we're currently using. So we feel that with Orange Beach being our sister city, that they would be able to use these air packs on their training division. They're the only department in the county currently using Scott air packs. There's only two other agencies in Mobile County that use them. So we think that this would be a good thing for them.
Melvin, thank you. Council? Audience, anybody? Lee, you're up. Zoning text amendment.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing item, so it won't be on your agenda to consider next week. It'll be before you sometime in March. This is ZTA 20-04. This is from a recommendation from the Board of Zoning Adjustment. We're proposing to modify Article 17-5E effect of variances to allow an applicant one year to receive a city-approved permit to act on an approved variance by the Board of Zoning Adjustment. In the zoning ordinance today, there's currently no time limit on the approval of a variance or acting on a variance, so this would apply that time limit. Just for review, the Board of Zoning Adjustment is established and empowered through Article 17 of the zoning ordinance, and their primary powers and duties are to hear and decide appeals to administrative decisions. In other words, if they don't like a decision that I make or the zoning administrator makes, they can appeal to the Board of Zoning Adjustment in order to have their case heard there. Also, they authorize variances from the standards of the zoning ordinance. Recently, we've had requests from applicants either to extend the typical six-month period for action on a variance, or they've just started out with their request for a variance to have a 12-month timeline in order to act on it. So January 7th, 2020, the Board of Zoning Adjustment approved an amendment to their bylaws to extend the time to act on a variance from six months to 12 months. That section of their bylaws now states that variances, if granted, shall be null and void at the end of 12 months from the date of the granting by the board, unless materially acted upon by the applicant or appellant, or unless otherwise specified by the board. Given this change to their bylaws and the fact that there was no time limit to act on the variance in the zoning ordinance, we did develop this text amendment, brought it before the Planning Commission last month. The Planning Commission did unanimously vote to recommend approval of this text amendment to the zoning ordinance. This is the exact language of the proposed text amendment. Everything in black exists in 17-5 today. Everything in red is new text that addresses this 12-month period to act, and the strike-through language would be removed. Variances, unless specifically conditioned by the BZA, shall run with the land. That does not change. The big change is here in red, a variance granted by the board shall lapse and be of no effect if, after the expiration of one year from the date of such action by the board, no permit pursuant to such variance has been issued by the city. The board may, for good cause shown, place specific conditions on the expiration and required action by the applicant in conjunction with its approval to grant the variance. In such cases, and where conditions established by the BZA have not been met, the variance shall become null and void, and the application shall be reheard with any new information or findings as appropriate prior to approval. That's the exact language of the text amendment. Staff, Planning Commission, and by virtue of the board, updating their bylaws, or we're all recommending approval of this change to the zoning ordinance. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have one.
Well, go ahead.
I have one. You said there's no time limit currently, but then several times, there's a reference to six months. Could you explain that?
Yeah, sure. So there's a lot that's in sync between the zoning ordinance that lays out the powers of the Board of Zoning Adjustment, kind of the procedures and everything. But this six-month time period to act on the variance is only in the board's bylaws. So whenever variance goes before the Board of Zoning Adjustment, unless they condition it otherwise, that six-month time limit is in place, and it's added as a condition of the approval of variance. But there's nothing today in the zoning ordinance, so we're just trying to sync the two up.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Jones.
My question was, with regard to someone, if they have gotten this variance granted and say some hardship, they encounter a hardship, a storm or whatever, does that automatically lapse at the end of 12 months? Or can they file for an extension? Or does it go away and they just have to refile and be reheared?
They can absolutely file for an extension. They do have to come back before the Board of Zoning Adjustment in order to request that extension, but they could certainly file prior to the expiration.
Thank you.
Lee, where the variance is a condition of, say, a site plan, which would have a longer period, approval period, and the variance expires prior to the approval of the site plan, how does that impact the site plan? Does the site plan then have to go back through a reapplication process as well? Or is that site plan null and void until the variance is extended or reapproved?
Usually, a site plan is linked to a variance granted by the Board of Zoning Adjustment, so it all depends on how it was conditioned, how the condition of approval was made by the board related to the variance or by the Planning Commission related to the site plan. Usually, they're linked.
So would the life of the site plan then control the ultimate life of the variance?
If that's the way the board conditioned the project, which is typical.
Thank you. And you're not limiting or requiring them to complete the construction? You're just requiring them to start? Explain that to me.
That's correct. The way it's recommended is that it's tied to a permit issued by the city. So if it's a large project and they need to do some grading activities, it would be tied to a land disturbance permit, for example. If it's just a setback for a single-family house, it might be tied to a building permit. But it's tied to any permit that's issued by the city.
Thank you. Anybody else on the council, any questions? Audience, anything? Lee, thank you. Anyone here that has a question or a comment would like to approach the council before we adjourn? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. Mayor, I hope you're feeling better. We missed you last week.
All right, I'm glad to be back, I can tell you.
On behalf of Phillip and the Planning Commission meeting last week, I actually liked what they did. You know, usually I'm opposing too much building at one time around here. But it was great that they worked with the attorneys, they worked with the developer and everything to go ahead with the 55 and over community over there at Craft Farms. Because we need something like that. We need nice housing for that age group, single-story. Don't have to worry about stairs, you know, like townhomes have and stuff like that. So I want to thank Phillip again. I have two other things. Can we do something about the speeding on Coastal Gateway Boulevard right now? It has turned into a joke here. We're not Highway 59. We're not Foley Beach Express. We're not County Road 20, where Ola is and Home Depot and everything. There's residential homes all up and down there. I didn't get to the beach yesterday, it was just too cold to walk. Actually, walked from Craft Farms down to the marina and back. I almost got blown away by several vehicles. I'm on the sidewalk. It's just getting ridiculous. I was hoping, the police department has been out there, I've seen them pull vehicles over, but they can't do it all. Is there any way we can get a radar machine like we got going towards the beach? Because that even wakes me up. I'll sometimes be doing 40 right there, and I bring it down to 35. It's just gotten ridiculous. And when I was walking yesterday, I spoke with someone on a bike who was on the sidewalk, and they're afraid to ride in a bike lane because traffic is just going way too fast. I know when a car's doing 35, 40 miles an hour versus one doing 60, 65, you can tell by the sound, feel of it, and everything. So we would appreciate if y'all could work on that. And my last thing is, some of our restaurants are starting to get lax with the mask again. It's an uncomfortable feeling when you're sitting at a table trying to enjoy a meal, and a hostess is walking by, six, eight people, none of them have a mask on. I was wondering if you could send someone back around again and see if we could work on that. And again, thank you all.
Good comments, and I think all of those are things we will recommend. That we get George Sury back out to kind of watch, and he's done a good job with that. And then Chief Niedemeyer, are you still here? That speeding situation, I know we're fighting issues like that all over the city. And so y'all just, you heard the comment, and I am asking you to see what you can do to help monitor that more closely. And if you've got a traffic display thing, you can place that there periodically. I think that'd be good.
We do have a portable one, and also, starting March 1st, we're starting a traffic unit that will be solely focused on traffic violations because we are having an uptick in exactly what the gentleman said.
Thank you.
Is the current speed limit 45 there?
45, 35.
35, okay.
And another thing to help, sir, is following the speed limit sign down by the marina, and now, and you push them up, it will be fresh, like you get some signs for drug and alcohol.
Yeah, we'll do it. I thought on County Road 4, it's 45. That's why I was thinking, maybe people are thinking that it's 45 on Gateway.
You know, that I don't know, but we're just going to have to monitor it. And if that is the speed limit that is appropriate through there, that could be a discussion point, too. But I think they're going a lot faster than 45. Come to the microphone if you can. We've got folks that are listening online, and I'm not sure they can hear you from back there.
And we got more neighborhoods going up. I know I'm getting a hard time getting out there. And then we got the school coming, the elementary schools. So we'd appreciate anything you can do, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else with anything? We are, the focus of the city right now is trying to get everybody vaccinated and trying to get everybody, so hopefully, you're paying attention to your opportunity and encourage everybody, everybody to get vaccinated. That'll give us the herd immunity process that everybody's talking about. And I do know that, because I've got kids that are in their 30s that are not interested in getting vaccinated because they don't think they need it. And I keep trying to encourage them, don't do it for you, do it for me. And I hope that we can continue to have more people vaccinated and get the kind of immunity here that allows us, maybe one day soon, to do away from these things. It's going to be a while, I'm sure, but I encourage everyone to get vaccinated. And let's take care of each other. So council, anybody on the council got anything they'd like to say? Anything? We stand adjourned. We'll see you next Monday.